We're starting. I want to call the April 5th School Committee Meeting to order at 5:45. You stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ware, if you take role.
Kira Thompson?
Here.
Colleen Marcus?
Here.
Nancy Farrell?
Here.
Kathy Levers?
Here.
Diana Coyne?
Here.
Bill Garvey?
Here.
Mayor Raichelt?
Here.
We'll start with a quick presentation and then move into the continued public hearing for the budget. Superintendent Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to quickly just summarize, and I'll ask Ms. Hunter to jump in this as well, but we're going to summarize what we presented last week. We do have one addition to this, so, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you. So, overall, we are presenting a 6.38% increase. But the one change I'll just discuss with everybody is that the budget sub met last week and approved a transfer from the Speech Language Pathology Assistance Line to the Speech Language Pathology Line. And that was an equal change, but it was a ratio of full-time equivalency of a position to a .4 of an SLP, which is a Speech Language Pathologist. So, that's been the only change that's happened since we last met to the budget. The backup details are still available online for anybody to review. All the notes about the changes are available online as well for anyone to review. Other than that, the budget as it was presented the first time back in March, it still stands. And we will have changes, obviously, as contracts settle of needs. But for what the purposes of what we're asking for the school committee to vote tonight, this is what we know of and we have officially approved as of today, so.
Anything else to add? With that, I will turn it over to the public. Anyone from the public that would like to comment? Just if you would, please state your name and address, and we'll give them here to three minutes. I have a lot of no one right now. I know we did get some emails today, but with this, if there is no one else that'd like to speak, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public budget hearing?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. And just for the public watching, we will debate the budget later in the meeting and take a vote ourselves. With that, we'll move on to the Student Representatives Report. Tasia, the floor is yours.
Alrighty, hello, everyone. So, the Drama Club will be, has presented "Footloose" last weekend, the school musical, and it will be performing again April 8th and 9th. Student Government will be hosting Spring Fling on Friday, April 29th at 6:30 p.m. Tickets will be on sale at lunch in the coming week. The Class of 2024 will have a dodgeball tournament from 2:30 to 4:30, April 8th, after school. The band received first place in the Holyoke St. Patrick's Day Parade. They also received bronze at the MICA Music Festival in Belger Town this past Friday. And Friday, May 20th, will be the Pops Concert at West Springfield High School that the band will put on. The West Springfield High School Democrats hosted a pizza with a senator, John Villes. Despite the senator not being able to attend, students talked about the correlation between attendance and mental health. Robotic has had the best season in years. They reached the quarterfinals in two regular season competitions, and it's looking like they'll place for the regional tournament, and they're practicing tonight. You can livestream the competition at netfirst.org. And then this year's season is dedicated to Jared Korensenfowski, a member of the team who passed away in January. Boys Hockey made it to round 16 in the state tournament. Cheerleading placed fourth at states. Musa, forgive me, I can't pronounce his last name, placed third nationally for wrestling. Quarter Four starts tomorrow. Terrier's Closet, run by senior Liam White, has a huge collection of prom dresses for students to borrow for prom. Girls Tennis is having a bottle and can drive, April 9th, at West Springfield High School, from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. Heritage Fair, this past Thursday, was a huge success after not running for two years. Personally, I think it had the best food. Mr. Johnson, during the month of May, ran the Refugee Storyteller Club, where students can share their amazing stories about being refugees to UNICEF to possibly get published. Daniel Rivas, Ben Drohnen, Roman Conca, and Matt Slade placed sixth nationally at Nike Nationals. And then there is a clothing and fooding, clothing drive and food donation drive by Ariana Bashkensivy to donate to Ukrainian refugees. And then the time for graduation came out, which will be at 11 a.m., and senior rewards will be June 2nd at 6 p.m.
Thank you, and I know you already said that. Any questions in the committee?
And the stories that you mentioned, the refugee stories, those are going to UNICEF?
Yeah, so students can, so during March--
Tasi, can you just use the mic, because the folks at home won't be able to hear you?
So during the month of March, Mr. Johnson hosted a refugee storyteller club, so students could go and share their stories, and then Mr. Johnson would help them write them. And they're published to the UNICEF, and if they're selected, then they're published by UNICEF.
Oh, that sounds really amazing.
Yeah, there's some really incredible stories. You should definitely contact him.
I guess I just sort of wonder, is there a vehicle that we can help amplify these voices within the town? Because I do feel this sense of global community that we really have within this town and within our schools, and how do we celebrate that a bit more and support them as well? I don't know, just offering that up.
I'm thinking about that. Good question. Anyone else? Seeing none, want a subcommittee updates? Ms. Frau?
The Budget Subcommittee continues to meet on a regular basis. We discussed the new needs of the district and how to fund them as identified by the administration. At our last meeting, we discussed the Dean of Students or VP at Coburn, the West Springfield High School laptops, facility study payment, subpay, enrollment updates, clerical needs, and the speech and language pathologist position. Some of these items will be on the agenda tonight.
Anyone else? Any other subcommittees that'd like to report? Mr. Robert?
Thank you. The Facility Subcommittee didn't actually meet this past month, but their chairman's going to get it together, believe me.
Just the Friday meeting, I think we're changing that meeting.
We've been a little bit of a stumble out of the gate, but it's all for the best, I think. We're really going to come up with a good plan. No, but on a more serious note, we were able to, we haven't met as a subcommittee, we are going to get together. I think our plan of meeting on Friday, or meeting on Tuesdays prior to school committee may not have been the best idea, so we're kind of rethinking that. But in the meantime, we were able to, I was able to attend with the superintendent and Dr. Perrone at Fozzie, along with the vice principals and the custodian, to do a quick walkthrough up there. And I really think it was a wonderful afternoon. It was a half day, so the students weren't there, so we really had everybody's attention. And I think that's a model we want to try to emulate with our meetings, is to get into schools, kind of look at that. And Tim had mentioned a real concentration on safety and security, which I think is a great idea, as we're doing those things, to look at those and kind of just see where things are. I think Vito mentioned it, to put them in buckets of the kind of things, the needs that we have. Some of them are obviously big that we know about, others maybe not. So I think it's a great opportunity to get into the schools. So, I'm excited about kind of changing the format and getting to that, and just bear with me on getting there.
Schedule.
So, that's it. And not a subcommittee will, but can I just do a communication? On the play, I was able to attend the play Saturday night. And I got to tell you just again, to be, I know a lot of folks have already been out, but for me, it was a big night out. I really enjoyed it, and it was just so good to see kids on the stage and live theater and things like that. So again, just to see West Springfield students doing their thing was really just a great night for myself, a great night for the community, and a shout out to all of them, so, good stuff. Thank you.
And this school committee member, who was Class of '84, had a special flashback as well for, the special Footloose for '84.
I won't mention when I was born. Anyone else? Any school that wants to talk about anything, communication, anything like that?
I'll mention something, too.
Ms. Farrell, go ahead.
So, the West Springfield Partnership for Education met yesterday, and we're kind of working through a few things that we need to work on this year. So, we have approved a couple of funding things. So one of them, we gave some money to the robotics team, and we're also funding a program at John Ashley School. We know Mr. Heath, when he comes up with an idea, has a great idea. So he's doing a puppet show and a pizza party, and it's going to be a family night. So, as Bill was saying, kind of to be able to have the group of parents and children get together again is like, you know, like, yeah, maybe we're getting back to that point again, where things are getting back to that sense of normalcy. So hopefully, the partnership will be having the mini grants next September instead of this April for people to apply. So, just for the educators in the community, kind of keep your ears open. We will send it out to all of West Springfield Public Schools, and all of the schools in the community are also eligible for partnership grants.
Alright, seeing no one else, we'll take minutes of 1st March 8th, 2022. Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve public budget hearing and open session minutes from March 8th, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. March 22nd, 2022.
Motion to approve open session minutes from March 22nd, 2022.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Alright, for those at home in the committee, we're going to jump around a bit here. As soon as track gets here, we'll take all the athletes. But until then, we'll have the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. First update I have is on the Coburn Construction Project. And we've had numerous tours the last month, getting people in the building, familiarizing them with the spaces that are being constructed and being completed. Today, we went through with the Director of Special Services and looked at some of the spaces that will be used by his programs and the students in Coburn. Some of the construction highlights right now. Installation is underway with a metal panel on the exterior of the trim of the roof. Skylights are going in, and it looks pretty amazing. They have the frames in for those skylights. There's still plywood over the skylights themselves, but it's really going to bring the natural lighting into the building and the classrooms. So it's pretty amazing to see the progress that they're making there. Drywall's going in throughout the building, but the administrative suite is really fleshing out. They're putting in kitchen hoods, the elevator's going in. The grid on the first floor, and the grid is the drop ceiling that's going in. You can see some of the rooms are more complete than others, and there's panels in place. And then some, just the grids are going in, and then the infrastructure underneath those. Soon to be completed, or recently completed, the coiling grills were installed last week. Installation of the last of the masonry veneer in the building. So if you look at the outside shell of the building, you really see some completion there, and it's beautiful as they finish up those exteriors. Drywall installations on the first floor will be completed this week. Installation of the grid in the third-story section is completed in the classrooms and on the second and third floors. Installation of finished light is going on in the second floor and third floor, excuse me. It'll be wrapped up this week, and they'll be moving to the first-floor corridors. To begin, installation of casework in classrooms. And as they get to the casework, you really start to see the classrooms form, and teachers, as they come through and are looking at their spaces, are really able to envision what it's going to be like to teach instructionally in the building. The other update I had is just a quick MCAS administration. I shared the MCAS schedule with the school committee. ELA window is open, March 28th to 29th of April. So the elementary schools, as Ms. Calabrese could tell you, are working through that. The high school has completed their ELA administration. And just anecdotally, I was in the middle school, observing some classes, visiting some classes. And I know there's a fear that people teach to the test, but what I really saw in the classrooms was teachers giving skills to students to prepare them for what's next. Whether that's an assessment, or whether that's moving on to college, the students are getting, are getting skills that they need. So they're not teaching to the test, they're preparing students for what comes next. And that part is an assessment, so that's all I got.
Questions for the Assistant Superintendent?
Mayor, I just wanted, I'm sorry, just wanted to invite the committee, again, to come visit the new Coburn. Especially now with the drywall up, you can really start to see all coming together. And the sheer size of the building is pretty amazing as well. So, love to have you come take another walk with us.
We should include the council as well, have them, invite them to come through.
Will do.
Alright, move back up the agenda and congratulate our student athletes. Superintendent Connor?
So Mayor and committee members, we're having a great year at the high school. We really are. Academically, fine arts, as well as performing arts, absolutely killing it, and our student athletes. And so, we wanted the opportunity to recognize some of our student athletes that joined us tonight and some of the achievements that they had. Our hockey team also made states, and they're going to join us hopefully on May 10th, or at our May meeting, I'm hoping it's May 10th, or May meeting. So, but we have wrestling and cheerleading and indoor track that absolutely killed it this year, and love to do some introductions. Alright, let's start with Coach K. Much come on up to the mic, do some introductions of our man Musa. I worked with, while he's getting up here, I've been working with Musa quite a bit. Yeah. Right, Musa? Remember when I pinned you? No, no.
So, I'll keep this brief, but Musa Tamarazzi has been, unfortunately, last year, we didn't really have a season due to COVID, so he missed out last year. But this year, he really flourished. He was 37-0. He won Mass Division One States. He won All States, which is Division One, Two, and Three. Then he went on to win New England's, which is all of the New England States. Obviously, he's the first one to ever do that in West Springfield High School. And then he went on to take third at Nationals, which is a pretty impressive feat. So, he's very deserving, very hardworking. He's getting ready to go to a tournament this weekend in Florida, so, you know, let me just bring him up, or?
Yeah.
Come on up, Musa.
Tell us about your experience at Nationals, Musa.
It was fun, like, another tournament, like, I don't know, just, yeah. Nothing special about it, honestly, just another tournament, just go out there and perform.
And Musa had the, I think it was semifinals, where he wrestled Derek Kasparowski's son, who grew up on Gooseberry Road, lives down in Connecticut now, so, small world.
Yeah, but it was my first match.
Okay, Musa. Hey, we can't pin everybody, alright? Relax there, my friend. Picture, you want?
Yeah, we'll all come down and get pictures individually of the guys, and we'll introduce everyone else, too, so. Thank you, Musa, congratulations.
Next up, Ms. Plangi and our cheerleading team, who also made it to states. And we're very proud of you guys as well. So if you can do some introductions as well, and just tell us about the experience.
Yeah, so they did really awesome this season, and I just want to thank everybody, too, for the opportunity and the publicity that they were able to receive this year. That really means a lot to the kids, and getting that support pushes them and gives them that drive. So we're super appreciative of that. This past season, they really felt that love, so, thank you for that. They are a coed team, so they had an undefeated season. We were Western Mass champs, and then we moved on to the state championship. We placed fourth at states, but they truly worked really hard and were deserving of all the effort and the hard work that they put in this year. So, we have a few of them here, a couple of them had to work. But if I could bring up anybody that's here, please come on up with my two other coaches, Stefan Soleil. You're going to take a, you don't want them up here now for a picture, so we'll have them sit, right? And I probably just waste their time. Oh, all of them? Sure, okay. This is Vivy Balboni, she's a senior and a four-year varsity cheerleader. Come on, Phil. You don't have to talk, you can just come. This is Delaney Gibbons, another varsity and four-year varsity and senior. We have Hannah Kellerman, another senior. Lots of seniors. Jenny Cavallieri, another senior. Hazel Poole, a freshman. Lindsay, I'm going to say it wrong. Palo.
Sure, sure.
Sure, sure. I say it wrong every time. Going to be a junior, so current sophomore. And then Jeleryz Martinez, a junior. Jeleryz J. I call them by nicknames, so I can't say their names properly, but this is about half of them. We're missing a few, but again, this is my coach, Stefan Plangi, and Soleil Stewart.
Well, congratulations, all ladies, great job, once again, making Westside proud, so, great job. In our final group tonight, that I probably helped as much with Musa as I did with them running, because I can't do that either. So, Coach Weber, if you wouldn't mind, come on up. And again, this, the group of boys here made it to Nationals, which again, is just absolutely remarkable and fantastic.
Well, thank you for having us. Yeah, the gentleman behind me, Matthew Slate, Roman Conca, Donald Kaloba, Danny Rivas and Ben Drohnen couldn't be here tonight, represent probably one of the best seasons this program's ever had. Especially after a year where we had no local meets. Our closest meet was two hours away this year, and I think they traveled every weekend. So I think we probably put more mileage on that bus than you guys ever wanted to. So my apologies on that part. And my wife also wasn't too psyched about that. But they went on, despite having no local meets, to, and no really local anything, we won the Division Two four-by-two relay championship, and then qualified for Nationals in the Sprint Medley Relay. Unfortunately, Donald hurt himself winning the four-by-two there. We also qualified the four-by-two in Nationals. And then at Nationals, the Sprint Medley Relay that had Ben Drohnen in it and Danny Rivas, who aren't here, placed sixth in the emerging league. So they actually podiumed, which was definitely the best result we've had in quite some time. So, they did a tremendous job this year. I guess you guys have to get up now if they can? Come on, you. This is Matthew Slate, if he can walk. That wasn't track running, though, so. Roman Conca and Donald Kaloba. And my apologies, I'd be remiss, my assistant coach, Dan Harries.
Yeah, once again, guys, thank you so much. And the pride of Westside is amazing in this room, so thank you. Not only for everything that the whole group of student athletes have done, but, you know, that's why they put the word "student" before "athlete", and I also know that you guys do very, very well, so. And seniors, congratulations on Quarter Four starting, so I know that's exciting. It's wrapping up. How about pictures?
Yeah, so we'll come down there, we'll do pictures individually with each group, and then all together. You guys can stay up there, so you don't got to walk back. We'll move this. I'm going to get yelled at.
Alright, can you do like a formation?
Alright, we'll move on to presentations. Memorial School Academic Progress. Ms. Calabrese, the floor is yours.
Well, good evening. It's wonderful to be able to stand up here again, so thank you for inviting me. So we are the Memorial Bs, hence the graphic at the beginning. And I wanted to have the staff celebrate their many accomplishments. It was early March, we had had a little surge, and I wanted people to remember the great things that they were doing this year. So the presentation includes positive quotes provided-- provided by every person involved in the well-being and education of our amazing Memorial students. And so this empowering exercise helped the staff to recognize and celebrate. And don't worry, I'm only reading excerpts. I won't read the whole thing. That's just me. Oh, I do things. So I did want to mention that several of the photographs in the presentation were taken by our leadership team. We have a fifth grade leadership team. And they've taken on a role of copying what I do and learning from what I do and saying, gee, that's a great thing that we should capture on film. Can I photograph it? So we've been having them take that role, and it's been wonderful. These are some pictures of the things that we've done this year. Of course, it's not a typical year yet, but we're getting there. And the first photo shows students working together. They're finally able to be a group together. On the rug, they're able to talk about their learning. And at the desks, the girls are sharing their writing. We had a celebration for St. Patrick's Day, and we have twins that were just adorable, so I had to capture that picture. We have some steam and stem in the middle picture, and that's a picture of students coming and going to school on the right. This is our welcome wall. We have approximately 25 languages represented at Memorial. And a teacher and I learned how to write the language. We hope that we did it very well. And that's our welcome wall. So when parents come into the building, they can read "welcome hello" when they walk in. So this is some school spirit. We've been able to do a lot with PBIS this year. We've had Read Across America. We've had Superhero Day. In the center on the bottom is our Lego League. I believe we're the only elementary school that has a Lego League. And they were able to go to the competition this year. So that was wonderful. And up at the top, we sell memorial swag for our families. And I have two teachers that love to dress in their memorial swag every Friday. So I had to include them in there. And so each teacher wrote something that really was meaningful to them. And I've highlighted areas that you might want to go through and just focus on those areas. But obviously, you can read the rest at your leisure. So, our first grade teachers are saying that everything really opened up when masks came off and carpets returned, and children's faces lit up when they could work with partners. Another first grade teacher said they've been building an amazing classroom community and welcoming a student from another room to join in. And they're even playing their morning meeting games when they complete their literacy centers. Third teacher said they love making personal connections with one another by greeting their friends in different languages, playing responsive classroom games, and learning about one another. And morning group seems to be their favorite part of the day. In second grade, they're very excited to engage with each other during classroom activities. Students have been working on our return to the classroom this year, and they've been very enthusiastic to get back to working together. This is our adjustment counselor. She works very strongly in three grade levels. And she's teaching regulation skills and the Zones curriculum. And then in fourth and fifth grade, she has lunch bunches to build social skills. In third grade, over the past two trimesters, we've seen improvements with our third graders in the area of cooperative learning. And they take turns and problem solve. And even when they have differences of opinions, they're doing less and less with teacher assistance. They're able to do things on their own so much more. Another third grade teacher, they've made gains in their social and emotional and academic learning this school year through responsive classroom techniques. They've learned about their individual strengths, and they bring them to the learning community. One of my special ed teachers said 17 out of 20 of her students made progress in their mid-year BASS assessment. And they're applying their learned reading strategies to read unknown words in context. A fourth grade teacher, who is a co-taught teacher with a special education teacher, through writing their thoughts in personal gratitude journals each day, students develop and practice skills associated with mindfulness. And they continue to learn about and put into practice their social-emotional competencies of cooperation, assertiveness, responsibility, empathy, and self-control. Another fourth grade teacher said they've gained confidence in skills necessary to problem-solve both academically and socially. And they disagree and agree using accountable talk. In fifth grade, we have another co-taught classroom with a special education teacher. And this is the grade where we have our student leadership team. It's a combination of both fifth grade classes. And this was just a little seed. I mentioned something to them in PLC meeting one day, and the teacher just ran with it. And the students are working with every grade level now. They read with students before school. They go into classrooms and they present lessons. And it's just been really empowering. And she said they've embarked on a journey of leadership in school community. And they're engaging in meaningful ways academically and socially, and they support each other with challenges. They've even made their own agendas and brought them to other classrooms and showed the teachers, this is what we'd like to do. Can you fit us in your day? You know, this is our lesson plan. And it's just been amazing. And another fifth grade teacher said students were practicing math facts daily through online games and Reflex Math and Quick Draw. And they're just increasing their scores every day. One of the co-taught teachers said students of all ability levels have been collaborating in literature circles. Their roles rotate, and the students are demonstrating increased confidence and sharing their thinking. And when working in small groups, they take academic risks. And that was something that we've really worked up to. They were a little leery to take academic risks at the beginning of the year. It was just the fact that they were finally together in person, and they had a bit of shyness. And now they're just helping each other and leaning on each other and supporting each other. We have an ABA classroom, which is Applied Behavior Analysis. And the students have made huge improvements this year in their social skills. They've learned to be more patient waiters and how to take turns and work in small groups. And these are first graders, so they didn't have a full school experience prior to this. Our school nurse... Oh, our school nurse. After practicing all the procedures and rules, students can demonstrate proper hand sanitizing. And many are still wearing masks, so they're appropriately wearing them. And they've really helped each other to keep our school community safe and healthy. And one of our math interventionists noticed an increase in the number of students who are able to build positive relationships with their peers. They've become more verbal and more motivated to learn. And they've shown growth in listening and following directions. Another math specialist said that they had to relearn the rules and expectations of being in school and working in both a whole-class setting as well as a small-group setting. A reading interventionist said when the year began, many students could not easily string together coherent sentences and would lose stamina. And now the students are able to create the sentences that make sense. They go back and check their work. They ensure that the sentence makes sense and says what they want it to say. And they're being creative. Many students... This is another reading specialist interventionist. In first and second grade, begin the school year unable to hear sounds in words or write the correct letters for the sounds. Students are now saying words slowly, connecting sounds to letters, digraphs, vowel teams, and writing words quickly. Our speech-language pathologist said she works in the ABA room, which is something that's very new to her this year. And she's very happy with their improvement in expressive language skills. One student's becoming more proficient in the ability to use augmentative communication and vocalize some of the speech sounds. Two reading interventionists said they've made progress toward forming letters correctly, and they're able to write words using correct letter formation. And most of their handwriting is legible. And since the beginning of the... We have to tell the truth. It's most of it, but not all. Since the beginning of the year, the first graders have become more confident and motivated to read and write. And they enjoy having comprehension conversations about stories they've read. And these are first graders that we're talking about here. All right, so math. So, we have to remember, at the beginning of this year, when a student felt ill or when a student was a close contact, they were out for 10 days. And then it was five days. And now we're to test and stay, which is great. But at the beginning of the year, there were students who multiple times were out for 10 days or five days, over and over again. So considering all of the academic interruptions that we had, they've really done amazingly. So we'll talk a little bit about math data. And I brought some notes here because it's a little bit difficult for me to see from here. So, these are some examples in grade three and five that I took from Reflex Math, which is a program that we piloted at the beginning of the year in fifth grade. And then it was purchased for the district in, I think it was February. So, in 10 days, up at the top, in 10 days, there was a fluency gain of 55 facts. And that was grade three. It was a sample. Some students went from 12 facts to 67 facts. In grade five on the bottom, in 16 days, 132 facts were gained. So, they started at 31.1% with 101 facts. And their current fluency, when I took this screenshot, was 71.7%. So that's huge gains with Reflex Math. The next slide is going to show I-Ready overall student placement. So, if you notice with the different colors, it does have a key there for you that you can see easily. But we have some students at mid or above grade level and early-on grade level. Yes, we do have some students one grade level behind, but they're all making gains. And we still have three more months of gains to make. And there, we are really closing the gaps with the students that are two or more grade levels below. And I'll show you some more as the slides continue. So, progress, annual and typical growth in I-Ready math. It tells you, it gives you a definition of what typical growth and stretch growth are. So, if you notice the annual typical growth, there's a column that says "met." Now, I'm going to point out our fourth grade column. They're at 42%, that they've met their annual typical growth. Now, fourth grade is very unique in that we expect first and second graders to be behind. But last year, only eight of our third graders came back to school. So they are our current fourth graders. They opted to remain remote. So these children had no school experience in person last year, and they're making huge gains. If you slide over to the column on the right, students with improved placement, that grade level has the most improved placement, 64%, which we're really proud of. The next slide shows the I-Ready Diagnostic 1 and 2. I-Ready Diagnostic 1 is on the bottom. If you notice, the green is very small on the bottom of each grade level. And it's growing. And the yellow is shrinking, and the red is shrinking. So that's exactly what we want to see. We want to see that progress. We want to close those gaps, which we are, and get those kids to grade level or above. The next slide, number and operations. So I'd like to point out, every... In just about every scenario, students have moved up, and many are on early-on grade level. We do have a few students that are grade level below, but they're still making progress. In the columns where they're more than one grade level below, everyone has moved up, and we've closed some of those gaps. So there are no students that are in the red anymore. And we're very proud of that. In algebra and algebraic thinking, again, mid or above grade level. I'd like to point out the fourth grade again. 0% were at mid or above grade level on Diagnostic 1. And now we're up to 33%. Also, in grade three, 0%, up to 22%. Grade two, 0%. So, we're happy to see that movement. And again, in fourth grade, on the rightmost column, there's nobody below two or more grade levels below, three or more grade levels below. The next slide shows Reflex Math, some fluency gains. I'll let you look at that yourself, but you can see that the green again is growing. And students on the bottom on the bar graph started in orange. And all of that orange is being overtaken by the green, which makes... Means that their current fluency is growing and growing each day. There's very little orange there. And then I gave you, in the next few slides, I gave you some samples. With Reflex Math, this is a fifth grade sample of multiplication and division. One student on the left has completed their facts. They're completely fluent, according to Reflex Math. And the student on the right is gaining fluency. On Slide 37, same thing. This is grade four. It's multiplication, facts to 12, getting fluent. And then there's another student that's showing the growing fluency. And the third sample is Reflex Math, grade three. This is multiplication... I'm sorry, addition and subtraction. Some students are working on multiplication. But we have such a disparity between students that are fluent or almost fluent, and then there's a group of students who are still progressing. But they're making gains, and that's what we want to see. And Slide 39, the children are rapidly gaining fluency. Again, I'm focusing on grade four. They are the leaders. These are the children that had no school experience last year for the majority of them. The leader's at 64.6% with the green light. Their average fluency gain is 81.7 facts. And their total fluency gain is 2,777 facts. And if you notice, this is incredible that students are enjoying what they're doing. They're on the computer, and they're gaining facts. And they're having fun while they're doing it. And then the next slide shows we piloted in fifth grade Reflex Math. And then when the district had suspended it for a while, it flatlined. And the minute we started using it, we've gained up close to 9,000 facts now. Look at how it's going up. It's really helping the students. And then with our mid-year data, this shows their I-Ready overall placement. And you can see that they're doing really well in phonological awareness, phonics, and high-frequency words. And we're making gains in vocabulary, comprehension, literature, and comprehension, which is informational. And again, look at the leftmost column, grades three, four, and five. Mid or above grade level, 100%. Grade two, 76%. The next slide, phonics, mid or above grade level. Grade three, 42%. Grade four, 70%. Grade five, 87%. So it's wonderful. High-frequency words, we're doing great. Look at the numbers for mid or above grade level. They're just moving up. First and second grade are making great gains. And then third, fourth, and fifth are in the 80s and 90s. Vocabulary is something that we need to work on. So we must remember that when our students were home... Many of our students do not have a language that is English as their first language. So they didn't get that rich language last year. They didn't have individualized writing and reading groups and teacher conferences where they were looking at their words together. So many of the students are working on their vocabulary. They're still... Most hover around the grade below, but still making progress. Literature comprehension. They're progressing with their guided reading and their flexible groups. And we're happy with the progress there. These were the three areas on the bottom that we're working on the most. And again, comprehension with informational texts in Slide 48. They're progressing, but they're still hovering a little bit below grade level. Now, we're back to a few of our staff members. Slide 49. Our PE teacher said they've made remarkable improvements on their throwing and catching skills. Our art teacher said they've made significant improvements incorporating language objectives that support content objectives. Our music teacher said the fourth and fifth grade students have also shown improvement with transferring written music to piano keyboard. The technology teacher said first grade students have made great strides in finding the letter keys on the keyboard. Many have cut the time needed to find the keys by half or more. Remember, these were children that were probably searching and pecking last year when they were remote. So they're really making good strides. One of our paraprofessionals said... I think we're on 51. Okay, yep, that was right. That was right, the one that you had. First graders have made great improvements in their writing, their independent work, and their problem-solving skills have also shown progress. their independent work, and their problem-solving skills have also shown progress. And all of the second grade students showed progress on their mid-year basic math facts assessment in comparison to the one given at the beginning of the year. Given that these students have encountered a time in education never before seen, the majority have displayed a notable advancement in their writing abilities. Their vocabulary and their ability to use text clues and other methods to identify and define words is equally impressive. And they're emphasizing punctuation and reading with purpose. The students are working well in groups and want their classmates to succeed. That's something that we're really proud of. They really are working as a team with their classmates. Many of our third graders had little experience being in a classroom setting due to the pandemic. Therefore, they had to learn how to follow all of the routines in the classrooms, organize their materials, socialize, and cooperate with peers. And we have a new secretary this year, and she said the children are respectful and well-mannered. They show the real meaning of teamwork when working with students and teachers and other adults. And they're willing to sit and talk about issues with other people. And substitutes said these great students have become good listeners and active, productive learners. And this includes the initial performance at the beginning of the school year compared to their current enhanced performance. And they've improved their skills when utilizing outside sources for research and writing assignments by implementing their own thoughts to support their research. And then what would a presentation be without our amazing kitchen staff who fed everyone for two years and continued to fill bags every day for students? And our lunch monitors who are re-acclimating them into the cafeteria? And they're teaching them all of the procedures. And we have an after-school program funded by the Collaborative for Education. And Mrs. Gummelar runs it. And she said the students in the after-school program have created and fostered new friendships. During enrichment time, students have utilized their social skills to make new friends and learn about one another through giving a nice compliment or sharing something about themselves. And our custodians, I thought this was adorable that they wrote, the kids thank us a lot, and they even clap when we come in to clean the sinks and keep the classroom sanitized. We did all we could to keep the school safe from germs and COVID, and everyone seemed to appreciate it. And this was a picture of the students who opted to dress up for St. Patrick's Day. And what's next this year? MCAS testing, which we're engaging in. We have a Girls on the Run program, and that's resumed. We weren't able to do that last year, but it's building self-esteem in girls. And our former PE teacher has come back, drives an hour back and forth, two times a week, to run with the girls and give them self-esteem. We have our after-school program, Session Three. We're excited about band and music concerts. We are Memorial as a PBYAS family event. We're going to have Field Day, and then we have a family picnic after that. We'll have a grade five celebration with families. We're continuing with our SCL and Equity focus. During our summer program, the students are going to prepare for the fall Lego League competition. And we're working on our addition and renovation. And that's very exciting for us because we'll be welcoming the EL students that are currently at Colburn, and they can be in their neighborhood school. So we're thrilled about that. And just, we are Memorial School. And I just had a little fun with that, and Stephen Lucy helped me to animate it. And the last picture, I have it up in the hallway. A student painted this of me in art class. I wasn't anywhere near him, and I just said, "I have to thank you," with my photo, my portrait. So I hope that it gave you a good picture of Memorial School. The students are doing wonderfully, and they're happy to be back. We're happy to be back with them and come and visit us. And we hope to see you soon. So thank you. And any questions?
If I could, I just wanted to just thank you for your presentation and always just in enjoyment going into Memorial School with the kids and the faculty and staff. Very similar to Colburn. There's a faculty there that have been there for a while and have dedicated their lives to the children of the Memorial District. And so we thank them as well.
Thank you. They are special people. They love our students.
Ms. Marcus?
First of all, thank you. And again, the academic growth is impressive. However, I really love the personal reflections from every member of your staff. Because, whatever, it's corny, it truly takes a village. And every one of those staff members is a critical part of the lives of those students. And to include them and have them have the opportunity to, in a very difficult year, to see how far they've taken the students, how much they've grown. So that I really, and again, I'm going to echo Tim's sentiments. You have an amazing staff. And many of them have been there a very long time and are truly amazing.
Yes, they are. Thank you.
Ms. Corrigan?
I want to thank you again. I was so, I read through the presentation earlier, and it was just amazing, like everyone said, to see the progress, to see all the comments from all of the teachers and staff. It was wonderful. And I was so privileged for Read Across America Day to come and visit you and meet you and meet members of the staff. And I, all the ideas of the creativeness and the resilience and the teamwork and this collaborative nature of the kids, I so felt that in Mrs. Flaherty's second-grade class because those kids were on fire. It was amazing just to see the minds working and, you know, not shy. None of these children were shy. They, you know, really just put themselves out there. And you could just feel the energy. And it was just a wonderful experience to see. So I thank everyone, you know, for all the efforts. I know how hard it was. And everyone is doing an amazing job. And I just, you know, echo again, you know, the sense of resilience by everyone. And, you know, you can, I see so much with future leaders and hopefully future teachers with your leadership program. It's really great. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Ms. Farrell?
Thank you, Donna. That was great, including all your staff. I did have a couple of questions.
We're all shocked.
About ELA, you mean?
Well, yeah, kind of something about ELA, too. I was just wondering about Reflex Math. Do the students do that at home or in school?
So they do it at school, and they also do it at home, sometimes for homework and sometimes on their own accord. And the great thing about Reflex is we will have availability over the summer. So we're really hoping that the students will want to keep using it. But they do it at least twice a week, usually three times a week.
So they can, at every grade level, can they take their computers home? Or they would have to have a computer at home?
They would have to use a device at home. But many are fine with that, and they're utilizing it. So we don't have that option to bring, we don't have one-to-one anymore. So we don't have that option to bring them home, but they're doing well with that.
And then the green light, and the math, the Reflex Math, sometimes there was a green light on this slide. Did that mean like that that was the percent of students that had met the objective?
Yes, and it means they're getting a green light to move on and work on their stretch growth, too.
Okay. And then it seemed like a lot of the ELA data was better than the math data. Like, I know that there was a couple of things in ELA that were a little bit harder. I think the vocabulary, but like the reading comprehension in some of them for ELA was very high. But math, math seemed to be more of a struggle.
Yeah, well, they're all making great progress, though.
Yeah, I wasn't like saying like they're not doing it, but just seemed like you had more students sort of not in the higher categories in math as in ELA.
Yeah, you could say that in some areas. But, you know, it's really hard when you're looking at data on paper. You're looking at, it's concrete in black and white. But then, when you see them in the classroom, and they're making different types of gains. Like, I'll tell you, I was having a conversation with a teacher today. And they were talking, she was talking to me about measurement. And she said, "We had to just stop what we were doing and let the children explore." They weren't realizing that something that was tall could be the same measurement as something that was short. So I think they're starting to make those connections now. And the math score, we'll start seeing the math scores go up. Now, I took, I started working on this last month. So a lot of this data that I took screenshots of and put in this presentation has actually changed for the better and gone up since then. But if you'd like to come and give them any tips, come on in. That would be, that would be great to have your expertise. But they are working, they are working to such potential. And I think if you notice in the math, you're seeing that fluency gain. I think they did lose a lot last year. And so if they can't, if they're not fluent in the facts, then they can't move on to something else. So I think it's held them back a little bit.
Yeah, I'm a strong believer in fact fluency myself.
I agree. I love Reflex Math.
But to that point, though, and I appreciate you bringing that up because when we, you know, when we started this change in the mathematics, you know, a bunch of years ago now, you know, that wasn't part of it. You know, we got away from that. And I'm so excited to see it coming back because it does, I mean, certainly we're seeing not only at Memorial, but you saw at some of the other schools as well, is how that impacts their math thinking when they have that automaticity.
Automaticity, like just, yeah. Well, so I would like to point something out. So I talked to the teachers and the math specialists on the first day of school. And our math interventionists generally do pull-out services. And I said to everyone, "Everybody needs services this year. It's just not that few that we're identifying." So we have push-in math twice a week for every grade level. And then we have push-in ELA services twice a week for every grade level. On every afternoon is pull-out, and every Friday all day is pull-out. So I did see that need because there are those children that are quiet in class, and you might not realize that they need help with certain concepts. So we did really go to a lot more in-class efforts. So I'm hoping that that will benefit everyone by the end of the year.
And then I noticed one slide talked about AVMR math games that students were playing.
Right. So we're still doing that. Students are still doing centers in the primary grades. And, well, they do centers in all of the grades, but they're doing the AVMR math. So sometimes it's done during that push-in time, and then sometimes it's done during pull-out. So again, that's building all that fact fluency and automaticity that was lacking last year because we couldn't get, we sent home manipulatives, we sent home games, but we didn't, we didn't know if everybody was using it with fidelity.
Right. I just, I had one more question. About the after-school program, is that like limited on enrollment? Or is many, like, just how does it work? Like, who can participate in it?
So the application goes out to everybody. But we do target our neediest students. That's what the grant was written for, for our neediest students. And there is a waiting list. We wish we could have more students, but it all comes down to staffing and funds for it. But we always have a full after-school program, a full summer program. And the children love it. They want to stay at school every day until 5:15.
So are students eligible in one through five? And is the focus of it academics?
Yes, the focus is academics, generally ELA. So, but we do, everybody has a different club. Everybody that teaches has a different club for the students. So they can join, you know, maybe one session, they do something that's math-related. Another session, they do something ELA-related. And then the Lego League is also part of that. So they're programming, they're building robots, they're doing lots of STEM activities. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to thank you. I know quite a few of your students and some of your staff. And I really loved that you highlighted not just the gains in the math and the ELA, but their social-emotional gains because they talk about those things more than they're going to be like, "I did better on math." And they come home and they talk about, you know, "We have this planned, and we have Field Day coming." So thank you for highlighting in that and showing the smiling faces because that means a lot to them, as well as all their learning, which is fantastic that they're gaining. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it's all a big package, right? You can't have one without the other. So thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Garvey?
I wasn't going to comment, but I just wanted to point out one thing.
You had so much time to think about it.
The "I Love Math" slide really was kind of like a cheap kind of thing to me. I kind of took offense because I really felt it was just going right to Mrs. Farrell. So in the future, we might want to just, you know, I don't know, include art? Or just say it? No, thank you so much, honestly. It was wonderful, and I loved your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone? Dr. Perron, go ahead.
Quick one. I just, you know, I've been in the building quite a bit because of the project and for other reasons. But the calm competence and professionalism that you bring to that building is really impressive. But I think what's probably the most impressive about it is your passion and love for the students and the teachers. And I just want to commend you for your leadership in that building, Donna.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I do love them all.
I know.
Was there any chance that your substitute PE teacher was going to get the Grin spoon this year or no?
I think so. I don't know what happened with that.
Maybe next year, huh?
Yeah, maybe.
Lost in the mail. Tragic. Ms. Cadbury, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Have a nice night.
We'll move on to the superintendent's report. We've done half of it so far. And the introduction, the Ashley principle, will be at the next meeting, correct?
Sorry, correct. Okay, so for my report, Ms. Hunter and I worked on the resubmission of the SOA grant, the Student Opportunity Act. It was required that we send any amendments forward, which we did. It's been a little bit of a challenge as the website continues to crash. But we did get it in on time. We did our piece on that. And so I will forward to the committee some of the changes. Nothing major changed on it. We're just building off of the things that we had in there previously. So a little change in the budget. If you remember, we were required to do a long form when we first did this two years ago, I think it was, maybe even longer now. But because enrollment dropped, we moved to the short form, which may have caused some of those issues that we have been dealing with. But we will get that summary report out to the committee on that. The next thing, if I, my glasses on. Playground updates. A big thank you to Mayor Reichelt and his financial support with the Tatum Project. As many people know, the Tatum footprint is a very, very difficult footprint. We have Springfield Waterline that goes down the left side, and obviously Mitten Egg Park on the right side. So we're kind of landlocked in there. And, you know, other schools have playgrounds, large playgrounds. And we've been, I think everybody has taken a crack at looking at the different spaces that we have. And it's just very, very difficult to find a large enough space at Tatum to provide that. That being said, with the support of Mayor Reichelt in providing us $50,000 to put in playground equipment. It's not a full playground as you would see, you know, with slides and everything else. But it does, the plan that we have and the draft plan that we have, I have to say, it looks like it's going to be a lot of fun. And I think the kids will really appreciate that. In addition, we will be paving the entire Tatum campus and changing up the entrance way a little bit to make it a little more seamless for pickup and drop-off and adding some new basketball hoops as well. So we're excited that upon the return of our students in the fall, that they'll come back to something that they really deserve. And I think it'll really help the students there at Tatum. In addition, we've been waiting on the Mitten Egg playground for a long time. And that's been a delivery and a material issue around the metals that go into that. We have good news that it is on its way. And so Park and Rec, as well as Dr. Perron and the DPW, were all met up there yesterday at Mitten Egg School to finalize the location. So we're good to go on that. And they'll start building. And they'll start, start building very shortly. So, we're excited for that as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions for the superintendent? Hand poised, do you have a question? Ms. Cohen?
My only question, just on the Tatum Playground, because I know there's, you know, strong support for that. Would that be the final or would that be a kind of an interim as everything's developed long-term for the, the building?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So, as you will see probably later in, in this presentation, you know, as we start to look at the feasibility study of the other elementary schools, one of the things we wanna be mindful of too is obviously putting a, a lot of money into a space which these playgrounds are as we look at maybe potential additions onto that, very similar to the Memorial Project. And so, at that time, there will be an opportunity as we start to look at what we can do and, and with that space and where that's going. And, and maybe having to look towards the front of the building rather than the back as we, as we have. But the feasibility study and what we've learned in the Memorial Project is, you know, generally you think about, you know, additions going off the back of things and, and that's not always the case. So, sometimes with real creative architects, we can change things up. So, there's an opportunity there as well. The issue is, we can't get away from the, the, the footprint is really, really difficult.
So, the short answer to that is, this is the interim. We do plan on doing a larger one later on. And I'm the lawyer.
Thank, thank you, Mayor Reikelt.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Yeah, Ms. Thompson?
Is the Mitt-Neg Playground, is that this year or is that over the summer? I know some kids.
This, this spring, this spring. So, they were up there again yesterday with the, the designer. So, they're, it's, it's on its way. So, it better go in this year.
I was gonna say April, but I realized we're in April, so. Anyone else? Seeing none, move on to the business manager's report. Ms. Hunter?
Thank you. So, we have a staffing request. The school committee at the budget sub approved last week to continue a dean of students position that we were, that they approved earlier in the year. And they'd like to continue it. And we're, we're funding it through ESER funding. And the district would like to continue to fund that additional administrator position for the 21, 22 school year.
If I could just clarify on that, it does say continued dean of students. That not necessarily is it, it's a dean of students right now. It may end up being a VP, just clarification.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to continue one FTE dean of students or vice principal position at Colburn School for school year 22, 23 using ESER funding.
Second.
A motion is second. How'd the subcommittee vote?
Unanimous affirmative.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. School choice funding.
So, the first item in that category is the high school laptops for staff. The district, actually the central IT department went out and received some E-rate funding, some federal E-rate funds to cover a portion of the cost for staff laptops at West Springfield High School. And the district would like to fund the balance of the cost, which comes to 47,000, $400 with school choice funding. There should be some attachments in, in your packets.
Do I have a motion, Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the use of $47,400 from school choice for the purchase of staff computers at West Springfield High School.
Second.
How'd the subcommittee vote?
Unanimous affirmative. I think one of the main driving forces in this is that the Chromebooks don't work as well at the high school for teachers. So, it's, to be able to have them have a different PC is better than a Chromebook.
And our future goal of this too is to bring this down, starting at the high school, bring it down to all levels. So, we figured the cost is marginal overall to replace Chromebooks with regular laptops.
And Mayor, if I could just jump in and, and thank you in both Stephanie Stratev for, for this. We did meet on this last week or maybe two weeks ago. And so, the, the plan, as the mayor mentioned, is to move back to a laptop-type district. So, over the next five or so years, it'll, we'll, we'll transition the, the middle school and then the remainder of the elementaries, as you know, within the Colburn Building Project, we went with laptops for them. So, that will be coming out of that project. But we'll, we'll be doing the same at the other elementaries over time.
For staff?
For staff only, yeah. Kids will remain with the Chromebooks. And, and that works.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.
Great. The next item is the district school building utilization analysis, which we were discussing just a little bit ago. We are looking to use school choice to fund the utilization analysis for the elementary schools. Expected cost for the analysis is about $50,000. So, that's what we need. And we're gonna use school choice. So, if that's acceptable.
Do I have a motion?
Yep. Motion to approve the use of up to $50,000 from school choice for the procurement of an elementary school building utilization analysis.
Second.
And the budget subcommittee voted unanimous affirmative. We've been talking about this for a while. So, this was just the step to be able to fund it.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.
The last item that we discussed in the budget hearing, which is the transfer of speech-language pathology assistant funds to fund an additional four-tenths of a, of a speech-language pathologist for FY23. So, I went ahead in the budget and made those adjustments, but we do need to make it official in order, I need the approval for, for that transfer of the funds.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to add four-tenths FTE speech-language pathologist for FY23 to be funded by the operating budget funds currently allocated to an speech-language pathologist assistance position. And the budget subcommittee was unanimous affirmative. I think this probably was a recommendation of the special education director.
Do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion is second. Budget was three in favor, zero opposed. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. New business, the superintendent's mid-cycle formative assessment on goals. Superintendent Connor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Just for the, the audience that are watching, part of the superintendent's mass general law requires a public evaluation process. And this is the formative, so this is the mid, mid-cycle of, of my evaluation. So, if I could, I will just call your attention to the slides. I did, I did share with you more detail of the, of the artifacts and the evidence towards the goals. So, certainly, we can, I can answer questions on those. I also just tried to put a summary of, of some information for the folks at home who may be interested. So, one of the goals that, that I had was to continue development and promote the district's five- and 10-year capital plans. This is something that Mr. Garvey mentioned earlier and, and some of the work that we're doing of, of getting folks out to the schools, doing the walkthroughs, looking at priorities both in this area of safety and then cosmetics and mechanical. And so, the hope is that in, in the development of these priorities, we will have an opportunity to share some of this with Mayor Reikelt and his team as we get closer to capital projects. As, as you're aware, Memorial Project is underway. And that is coming at the, at the closure of the Colburn Project. So, we're jumping right into the next one. We mentioned the Tatum Playground and, and Tatum School Paving. The other one that I believe is coming up in FY24, I believe, is the Fozzie Parking redesign. And that is something that is really needed, as we all know, but does certainly take much more design and planning around what we wanna do there to fix the traffic patterns. And as we mentioned in what you just approved was that $50,000 to do the elementary facility study. So, the way I look at the goals that, that I put forward to you, as much as I would love to say that, you know, everything in my goals is, is strictly related to me, that is not, that is not true. I, I, I believe that the role of a, of a superintendent is one, to put very good people around you. And I think I've succeeded at that. But also, to be sure that all the, all the, the roads are, are in the water and we're all going in the same direction as part of that. So, as much as I'm excited for some of the gains that we've made towards, I'll say my goals, but it's really our goals, I, I need to thank a lot of people who have been part of this. So, this is certainly not all, all Tim Connor. So, jumping into the professional practice goals, as it's been with us for the last, boy, I don't know what it's been, six years starting, something like that. We're heading towards the end. And as, as we went through the walkthrough today, we're starting to see classrooms coming out of it. And the building is just absolutely gorgeous. And I can't wait to have the opportunity to bring the community through for those people who have helped fund this because you really need to see this school. It is, it is really the Taj Mahal and we're excited for it. We're at 66%. It's probably a little bit higher since, since putting this together with 12% being the demolition piece of it. So, we're moving in the right direction. We have a couple of critical areas that we're monitoring to be sure that those are in place for the opening. And having conversations with our, one of our OPM folks today, they're feeling more confident in, around some of the coils. I'm learning more about facilities and mechanics than I ever thought. I don't even own a hammer. And so, that, we're, we're, we're feeling good about where it is. Paints on the walls, tiles on the, on the walls and floors. So, we're getting there. We're getting there. And hopefully, we'll, we'll be ready, ready to go in September. So, central office team, we continue to meet weekly. We meet every Tuesday morning at 8:30. Generally goes for an hour, hour and a half. And this is really for me to have the opportunity to cross-reference all our departments to be sure that we are doing things efficiently, being sure that the work that's happening in one department is not redundant to another department. And really, it's about sharing out how we can support one another. One of the things that I have been trying to do is break down silos of departments because that's not how we work in education. And we have for a long time worked that way. But the reality is, is collaboration really is, is the, is, is what leads to success. So, when one department, when the special education department knows what the EL department's doing, what the curriculum folks are doing, there's, there is less opportunity for redundancy. So, that happens every, every Tuesday. Feel free to pop in. We have a really interesting, with this also, and again, as I mentioned, this is a team approach. Dr. Perron has, in part of the COT, what came out of the central office team meetings was a new approach of, of how we go through walkthroughs in the walkthrough systems. And that means going into buildings and getting into classrooms and seeing great things, but also having the opportunity to talk to the building principals on what we have seen and what guidance that we may be able to give them, or even just a high-five of the great work that they're doing. In addition, it gives us an opportunity to also congratulate the teachers on, on the work that they're doing. And as, as you've seen at the last three, four meetings, you know, the work is happening from where we started at the beginning of the year, which was somewhat even frightening, where, where we needed to get our, our students to and where we're moving to is really, is, is remarkable. And that is evident in, in the, the work that we do in getting into schools. So, the next one is the equity work that we have been doing and that we have been doing for the last three years. And certainly, we, we use the word equity and, and sometimes it's, that word is, is really pigeonholed to a certain aspect of how people think about equity. In West Springfield, with 52 different languages, with, with students who come from poverty, to the students who we need to challenge and provide opportunities of advanced study, that's what we're talking about when we talk about equity. And that's embedded in everything that we're doing. So, we, we have done a, a survey, a climate survey that is, I felt is a wonderful survey that can be used across many different avenues within our grants that we have to do and whether it be the equity work or whether it be securing, secure fundings at the federal level. This is, is the great work. And I've been excited for this and I, I appreciate all the support that the, that the committee has provided for us. It, it's great work for particularly the community that we, that we have here. Student learning goals is the next section. And this is something that I had sent out to, to you. It's just a indication of, of where we are with some of our, our data points. And the one that you're looking at right there, the percentages, is our dropout rates. So, you'll see that, and we're missing 2021 somewhere, but that's at 1.3% for the, the 2021 school year. You'll see that we got down to in 1920, just pre, well, middle pandemic to one point, zero percent, understanding that the pandemic had, also had an impact on, and sometimes a positive impact on that percentage. So, we continue to find ways. The 1.3 equals 18%, or I'm sorry, 18 students. So, as I mentioned in the email to the committee, that, that is still not acceptable, in my opinion. That the, the percentage looks pretty good, but the reality is, even one student that is dropping out of high school is not acceptable. And we're continuing to find ways, for example, the different pathways and opportunities for kids to find their niche in learning. And we need to continue that work. And we need to keep being sure that, that the funding that we have allows us to provide those types of programs for different learners. And so, one of the things that we talk about quite a bit is a growth mindset and not a fixed mindset. And growth mindset meaning that whether it be the teachers, whether it be the administrators, superintendent, whether, whoever it may be, where did we start with it and where are we and how far have we progressed? So, very similar to the presentations that you've had from the elementary principals, right? We started with a, a benchmark and we're, we're excited to see the growth. We use that same mindset for, for a lot of things in our district. And it allows for a couple of things. It allows for that risk-taking that, that Mrs. Calabrese talked about, both on the teaching side and as well as the student side. Giving, giving the opportunity for people to make mistakes and fail and grow from that. That's how learning happens, right? So, we wanna encourage that. And that is something that hopefully folks are feeling across the, the district. You'll see the data that, that I presented to you. I don't have the updated data from Q2, from quarter two, but pretty remarkable in terms of the year that we're having. You know, when you look at. You know, when you look at the high school alone, the, the percentage is, is down thirty-two percent of students who are failing one or more classes. I would say, again, I would need to get to this data, but I would say that we are probably doing even a little bit better at, at this, at this time of year, which generally we see that obviously changed that number, and it's not always for the positive. But Mr. Danby is starting to incorporate incentive programs, and it's just, it's just great. I spent the day up there a couple of weeks ago, the entire day, and Dr. Perron also, and a couple of the other central office team members. And the bottom line is, we got some absolutely phenomenal kids, and we got some phenomenal teachers, and that's the, those two things are the ingredients for success. And so it's, it's good to see when kids come in and they're happy to be there. That's when they learn. So we're, we're excited for some of this data, and, and certainly at the middle school, we saw quite the jump in our, in our honor roll as well. We're, we're continuing our IST process, which is the process for our, our students and our teachers, to provide referrals of students who are, who may be struggling in areas of, whether it be social-emotional supports, or whether it's academics, so we continue to do that. But as you remember, the department gave us the acceleration roadmap and the priorities of that. And I have to say, and I said it back at the start of this, it's a phenomenal document. And so sometimes we don't give DESI the, the credit that sometimes they deserve, they deserve credit for the roadmap. It really, it allowed us to get an, an understanding of what that objective was, and to plan backwards doing that, to get to the point where we are today. And so part of that was a survey, is a climate survey that we sent out to elementary teachers, students, middle school, high school students as well, parents, and school personnel. And that, that helped us gather a lot of information. The theme of it was around belonging, because that was the big thing on the social-emotional side, was the kids returning after a pandemic and where they were, and what we needed to do to be sure that they were feeling, feeling good, feeling safe, and feeling supported as they came back. And Dr. Guile has done a ton of this work with Mrs. Brennan, and I can't thank them enough, and we're seeing the results of that work. The, the next exciting thing, and thank you also, Mrs. Marcus, for serving on this, but we are in the process now, we're getting towards the end of new reading adoption process for the elementary. This is well overdue, and the teachers right now, I believe there are seventeen teachers or so that are on this, that are piloting a couple of the programs. We've, we've used the DESI curate and DESI staff there to help us with this process. And a lot, and, and what's changed quite a bit in curriculum adoption and program adoption is really all based around highly qualified, research-based, highly qualified materials. I can't say, even when I was curriculum director, which wasn't too long ago, that everything that we could say was highly, highly qualified. And so the state has done a great job in, in listening to us a few years back around developing work in vetting out programs to make sure that they're research-based and highly qualified. And they, they took that, that, that desire, and they put this together, this curate for us, and it's been wonderful. So individual communities still have an opportunity to not use any, any of their materials, but when you start to look at what is presented, it's been vetted, and it's aligned to the standards very, very well. And it incorporates the subcategories of special education and EL support, so our tier-two programs, as well as dyslexia, which is the next thing that we are very mindful of. Mayor, that's it. As a lawyer, you probably would have done that faster or slower.
No, that was good. Questions from the committee? Ms. Farrell?
Not questions, just comments back to Tim on the formative assessment. We know that it's been a difficult two years since you've taken the position with the pandemic and the construction of a new school on your plate during this time. You always took the time to put students first, looking at how things would impact student learning for all of our students. And the driving force that was used was the district improvement plan, so everything kind of went back always to the district improvement plans. In terms of the goals, the goals seem to be, you seem to be meeting your goal on capital planning in Coburn, and working to create a cohesiveness between the district improvement plan, the school improvement plan, and the goals among schools and departments within West Springfield Public Schools. You're always looking for a systemic approach to address the perceived and actual gap, actual learning gap moving forward. I like the fact that we're addressing literacy in the district, and hopefully the budget subcommittee and the curriculum committee will be able to provide the budget subcommittee, the funding curriculum committee, the approval for the new literacy program. The equity team continues their work. There is a significant amount of data to review, and we will see how the district will move forward to ensure equity in the district. We know that the budget is never an easy project, but Tim works collaboratively with the members of the budget subcommittee to develop a fiscally sound budget that meets the needs of the students and staff of West Springfield Public Schools. Student learning goals, we can see from the presentations of the elementary principals that there is a collection of data, and it is used to improve instructional gaps and reduce learning gaps. And I like the fact that you talked about all the groups moving in the same direction, like using that same common theme. The system for the central office team members to visit schools, when I first looked at it, I didn't have a complete understanding of it. Tim explained it to me, where the district improvement plan and the school improvement plan, the integration, and kind of looking to see that those are actually what you see in the classroom. So do you see the alignment of the district and school goals within the classroom along with the acceleration roadmap? So my understanding of that improves. So I'd say you're on the right track.
Anyone else? Ms. Marcus?
So I'm not going to address each of your areas so specifically as Nancy, but, so when Tim took over as interim superintendent, as the pandemic broke out.
Before.
Right before the pandemic. Maybe a month. One of, I'm going to quote Tim, he said, "We were building the plane while we were flying it. And through the challenges presented over the past two years, Superintendent Connor not only built the plane, but ensured that plane continued to move in a direction which continually enhances the learning for all students. Superintendent Connor is committed to making certain that all West Springfield students have equitable access to high-quality instruction. He embraces the multi-tiered system of support, which focuses on ensuring that all students are provided with both the academic and social-emotional instruction they need as part of their core instruction. In order to provide high-quality instructional materials for all students and best pinpoint and target student learning, Tim expanded our diagnostic assessments to including, include a reading diagnostic, and launched committees to review, pilot, and ultimately purchase high-quality, and hopefully ultimately purchase high-quality materials for high school math and elementary reading. In addition, he has focused on our facilities, overseeing the construction of the new Coburn School, the addition of memorial, on memorial, and having a utilization analysis done on the elementary buildings." I could go on and on, but I'm going to close with, I'm going to be a little corny here, Tim, but thank you for all your hard work as the captain of our plane, and your continued commitments to the West Springfield students, staff, and families.
Thank you. And, you know, again, you know, this is, this is a team approach, so I thank you for putting my name on it, but it's, it's all, all the work that you do as well, and the support that you give. So thank you, and so it's a, I appreciate it, and there's a lot of people that should benefit from those comments, but thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Quin.
I'll try to be short. I would just like to add, because I agree with all of the leadership qualities, certainly I've seen that over the past couple of years. I would echo that, in this unprecedented time, you really rolled with it while this plane was being built on the fly. And you continue to do so, and you continue to do so with positivity and with humbleness, and you're in the trenches. You're, you're dealing with everything that comes your way admirably. Not all of it is easy on any given day. So, you know, I applaud that as, as someone who, you know, is in a different industry, but faces different kinds of challenges. So I, I see what you're dealing with. The only other thing that I think is important, and maybe important for all of us as we get to this point of the budget, in asking, when we go to ask, there is still a lot of challenges, certainly social-emotional, we have classroom sizes, et cetera, et cetera. I think we're all seeing this acceleration and, and this, we're bouncing back. And I, to me, I just think more, what more could we be doing, you know, with just maybe a little bit more? But what I think is very important and powerful with all of these different statistics that have been presented, when this goes to the town council, and I think as the public wants to hear about all this, I think it's really important to emphasize a lot of these statistics, a lot of these improvements, because that does end up, I think, resonating with people. I think people, you know, if they don't understand all the components of a forty-six-million-dollar budget, but if you can show a percent improvement in dropout rate, or, you know, for nothing, you know, where kids might be going to schools, or, you know, where different career paths, all the different avenues, how do we highlight that and amplify it? Thank you, and thanks for all you do.
Anyone else? Mr. Guy.
Thank you. Tim, I didn't prepare anything. It would have been really long if I did. You probably would have had a tear in your eye right then.
Mayor probably throws something out.
I really want to say, as you sit here and say, and give all the credit to your, to your team and the teachers and everything else, and, and everything in this district reflects on you. In, in most days, probably it's the bad things that reflect on you more, honestly. Let's, let's face it, in the years you've had. And, and as we sit here and we recognize these amazing students and these amazing teachers, and, and I go to a play on Saturday night and sit there and go like, wow, look at these kids, that's a reflection on you too, and that's a reflection on you and all the teachers and everyone in this district, and all of us too, I guess, for that matter. And as much as I will say, I hate doing these, like, evaluation things, and I know we have to do them and why we do them, but this is really what, again, we need to be mindful of that, that all these things, when, when we're reflecting on an individual like Musa and the amazing things he's doing for our town, that, that reflects on all of us as well, too. So, so it always is like a two-way street, and I just want to really point that out, that even all those little things don't really, I, I know you don't, you know, they're not all to Tim, but they really are in a way, too. So, so thank you for that.
How did you find the time to coach Musa? He's a driver.
He's coming along. He's coming along. I, I like where he's going.
Anyone else? Ms. Thompson?
I'll be quick, I promise. Just going off of what Bill said, honestly, as a parent and only being on this side for a couple of months, he's right. All the negatives, like, they all go back on you. So it's like, it's nice to see the positives. And I know parents, they see the positives too, but, you know, you know what it is, they focus. So I would just like to say thank you for your constant communication, not only with us, but with parents over the last two years. I mean, we always got the emails with the nice little quotes on the bottom, trying to make us not go crazy. So I think it's great that you were communicating. I think it's great that you communicate with us and keep us in the loop. It's really great to see your goals with the capital projects especially, like, finally coming to light, not just on paper. So that's always nice. And I just want to say thank you, and you work really hard, and we appreciate it.
Anyone else? Ms. Levers, you might as well.
I'll be the quickest. You know I concur with all of them. And you reach students, parents, teachers, administrators, you lead us, and we're so happy to have you, and lucky.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Farrell? No, we didn't, this is approval needed on my sheet right here.
I thought we did. That's what I was saying.
Okay. Never mind. Tim, you're doing a great job. Thank you for taking the job two years ago. Approval of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three budget request of forty-nine million, two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars. Do I have a motion? Ms. Farrell?
Motion to approve the FY twenty-three budget request of forty-nine million, two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars.
Second.
Did the budget subcommittee take a vote on this?
Yes, the budget subcommittee.
Voted three in favor, zero opposed.
Unanimous affirmative, three in favor, zero opposed. Are we making comments now?
Yeah.
Okay. So just about the budget, if we look at the budget, I think that we are trying to address the needs of the students and the teachers in our district. Some of them, some of it may not actually be in the LEA budget, but we have some other things in ESSER funds. So like, we have to kind of put it all together, and that's the hard thing about this, is sort of figuring out what pot of money everything comes from. So I know that there's, was some concern about some larger class sizes, and I think we're addressing those through the ESSER funds. So even though you may not see them directly in this budget that we're presenting to the city town council, we are working with some of those things in the ESSER funds. And even some of our, like, specialists, math specialists are funded in the ESSER funds, the dean of students or the vice principal at Coburn regardless, is in the ESSER fund. So we are, we do want to be fiscally responsible for the town, so we, we would probably like more money, mayor, but we're trying to be fiscally responsible as a school district through the leadership of the, the central office team. But we, we want to make sure that we're doing what we can for students, and we felt with the budget that was put forth, we were.
Mayor, if I could just jump in on that, and just, again, a thank you to Nancy Farrell for, I just want folks to know that when we put the budget together, there's a lot of conversation that happens, and there's a lot of critiquing, and, and it's not, it's not all just, okay, Tim, okay, Tim. We've had some, some conversations over the last couple of days, and folks are, on that budget sub, are doing their work. They're asking questions, they're probing. So I just wanted the community to know that, you know, this is what they're, what they're putting forward, what we're putting forward, has been heavily critiqued by the, by the budget sub and ultimately the school committee.
Anyone else? With a comment on the budget? Seeing none. Ms. Ware, would you take a roll call vote?
Yes. Kira Thompson?
Yes.
Mike Marcus?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Kathy Levers?
Yes.
And Lynn Martin?
Yes.
Bill Martin?
Yes.
So that's six in favor, one abstention, public comment. Next school committee meeting is April twenty-sixth. It is a workshop. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. About opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you.